So, it's 10:00 AM on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. I'm hereby calling the meeting of the Board of Supervisors in Story County to order. And please feel free to join us if you want in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The next thing we have is adoption of agenda, and I'll just make a note here that under the consent agenda, we'll be pulling Item 6, pending further review. Is there anything, any other changes on the agenda?
I just have a question maybe for legal counsel who walked out. I'm sorry. After the closed session, do we need to state that we're going, that we will go back into open session?
We'll return to open session.
Okay, so it just said a German on there, and so I just wasn't quite clear.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions about the agenda? Okay, I'll consider it adopted then. Public comment number one, is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment about a topic on today's agenda? If so, would you please move to the microphone? Seeing no one move to the microphone, I'll close public comment session. Next, we have agency reports. Irelie Ball Annual Report, Cynthia Stedel?
Thanks.
Stedel Bishop, I'm sorry. Cynthia, welcome.
Good morning.
Hello, good morning. I'm Cynthia Stedel Bishop. I'm the CEO at Irelie Ball Community Medical Services. You have in front of you, I provided information, more detailed information about Irelie Ball, and I'll just kind of give an overview about what we're up to now. We have been providing services in Story County since 2012 for a while, and we started out as an outpatient clinic, and now we're providing seven additional services in Story County. And so, we feel good about that because we are designated community mental health center, and what we do as a community mental health center is to be a safety net organization that provides services, the whole continuum of services for folks. We serve mostly adults, but we provide that whole continuum of services for adults with mental health issues. So, the programs that we've added, we serve, obviously, we work at the clinic, so we do therapy, and we have a med provider there, as well as we have care coordination, which coordinates services and gets funding for clients. We have community-based services. We have our mobile crisis team and our ACT team. So, those are all the services that we have. I thought I would focus, you probably know about a lot of those services, so I wanted to talk about three specific services. And one is our Restore program, which I think is a really neat, awesome service. It's an evidence-based service that it treats folks who have first episode psychosis. And so, it's an evidence-based service that we actually, Irelie Ball was one of the pilot projects when nationally, they were doing pilot projects to see if this would actually become an evidence-based service. And the way to talk about it was, I'll just tell you a brief story about a call that I received last week from someone in the community, and they said they had a relative who was living out in California, gone to school out there, and the roommate called and said, "You gotta come get, get your kid, something's up." And so, they brought him here, and he was having his first episode of psychosis. And what we do then is that we will, it's an all-inclusive service, it's a wraparound service, so we have a med provider that works specifically with the clients in that Restore model. We have a therapist who works with the family and provides support to the family. We have therapists that work individually with the client. So, it's this, and we have community-based services. So, it's kind of like our ACT team, except it's when a client is first diagnosed, so that way, they can receive services, so their baseline stays higher, and their recovery is going to be much better, the outcomes are much better, when their client is first diagnosed, and that way, they can receive services, a lot of services, right away. So, we provide that service up here, and we provide it in Des Moines, as well as up in Story County. So, it's really an awesome service. Another service that's fairly new to Story County is our ACT team. We serve community treatment team. We've got 18 clients in that program. It's kind of similar to Restore, except it's kind of on the other end, where that's an evidence-based model, but it has, they have to meet a lot more requirements. It's a Medicaid-funded service where they have to essentially fail, what they call, all the other services, so the other services don't work. So, then they are, again, it's a whole wraparound service where they get all of their services from one team, and it's a 24/7 program. And then, the last service is Mobile Crisis, which is not, not new this year, but it's been around for about two years, I think we're going on two years. And I just wanted to report that 72% of the people that we see in Story County were diverted from the hospital. So, we thought that was a pretty awesome number. Law enforcement here in Story County has been wonderful to work with. We get a lot of referrals from law enforcement. So, we go out in teams of two, and law enforcement generally calls, but we are getting more self-referrals, which is great, because people then are starting to call us instead of calling law enforcement. So, that's been wonderful. So, Mobile Crisis continues to grow in, throughout the whole region, but Story County is one of our biggest counties that use that service. So, we're excited about that. Irelie Ball, when we look about our strengths that we see, our strengths that Irelie Ball is that we do provide that full continuum of services, and we want to continue to add more services up in this region. We love working with the CICS region. They are fantastic, professional, great people who collaborate with providers. We love CICS. And we continue to want to expand more services up in Story County. We also, Irelie Ball, we've always kind of filled gaps. When we see a gap in service, we want to fill that gap. So, that's one thing that we want to continue to do up in Story County. We'd love to provide a senior outreach service up here for seniors to, we can provide therapy for them in their homes. It's hard to get funding for that service. Parity does not apply with senior, the senior population. It's really unfortunate, but we're gonna keep trying. And we affiliated with Unity Point about a year and a half ago, and that's been really positive for us. It's allowed Irelie Ball to have access to resources that we never had before. And also, this last year, we've combined our community-based services with our clinic, and that's been really great for collaboration. The challenges that we have, not just in Story County, but throughout in mental health, is recruitment. We have, you know, it's, on the positive side, a lot of people are working. You know, with 2.5% unemployment, we're all like wanting those same people. So, we really struggle with recruitment, even though Story County has continued, and the CICS region has continued to provide incentives to recruit people, we still struggle. And we also have, we struggle with our rates. We, you know, as a community mental health center, we really want to provide services out in the community. We really think, believe, believe services in the community are so important to the success and recovery of the clients that we serve, but it's, the rates are not good for the community-based services, and that, that's a real challenge. And we can, want to continue to advocate for higher rates for those community-based services. Do you have any questions?
I'll let you go first.
Thanks for being here today and stuff. I just want to actually make more of a comment and stuff. The Mobile Crisis, I have seen from my prior roles, is definitely a positive impact in hearing from local law enforcement, particularly Julie Saxton with the Ames Police Department, who said her caseload has decreased dramatically because of Mobile Crisis. My one question is, do you still have just one team in this particular area, or do you have more, more teams up?
For Mobile Crisis?
Right.
We, the way that it works is, we have, I think this is maybe your question, we have three teams. We have a northern team, a central team, and a southern team.
Right, right, right.
And you're wondering how many teams respond here?
Yeah, well, I know, because of the volume of calls, and with Ames being a highly populated area, which, where there's probably the larger concentration of your calls, there had been conversation of needing maybe two teams in this particular area. And I just didn't know if your numbers are showing that that's still a need, or if it's being managed how it currently.
Well, right now, based on our response time, it's about 38 minutes, I saw was our response time. So, I think that's pretty good. And until, you know, if our response time was getting past that hour, then we would definitely want to add more teams. So, if we see that, we will definitely add, I mean, we want to be, be there to meet the need. So, this response time shows that we are getting to the calls within that hour time.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm interested in kind of the turnaround time, the wait time, for clients then to get into the actual center, to whether it be for med checks or anything like that, you know. So, more in your role as community health, as the actual, our community mental health provider, how is it going as far as appointments and turnaround time?
Well, that's a struggle, for sure. That is a struggle, just like I said before, getting, recruiting is hard. So, we have a med provider, it's a telehealth provider that we have up here, and I can't tell you what our wait time is for that. I don't think that's a huge issue, but what we've done is, we've brought up therapists. We just hired a new therapist that has started up in the clinic, and then we have another therapist, we've got, we've got three therapists. I think, I think the, you have the number of staff that we have up in the clinic, that's on there. But I can't tell you the wait times, but that's an issue. And it, and it's an issue that we certainly, I met with Heather Thomas, who is our outpatient clinic director this morning, and we talked about that. Just broadly, it's, it's tough, because we have open access, where people can just come in and get services, but the problem is then, is that follow-up service is taking about a month to get that follow-up appointment. So, that's where we really struggle. We want to get people in, but it's the follow-up.
You may be able to get them in, isn't it? On Thursday, you have times blocked.
For open access.
And then, you can get them in, but it's getting, oh, okay.
The follow-up, yes. Yeah, so we're averaging about a month for the follow-up.
A month for the follow-up, okay.
If I, if you, let me ask a follow-up question here.
Sure.
So, roughly, what do you think the gap is percentage-wise for pay between what you're able to pay and be sustainable, and what you think you'd need to pay to be able to really make sure that you had the staff you need all the time? Are we talking 20%?
Here's what's tricky about that, and surprising, actually. Again, the CICS region has been wonderful to work with, and that's an issue, right? Paying for staff. And so, what they did, LISWs, Licensed Independent Social Workers, are the hardest to recruit. I would, as well as med providers, are the hardest to recruit. So, what they did was, they provided incentive dollars to recruit LISWs. And it's a really nice incentive, and we still can't recruit.
Okay.
So, that's been a real struggle. We just are really surprised at that, because LISWs are the only ones that can serve the Medicare population. And so, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that. We thought that those incentive dollars would really be, would, would be able to bring people in, and we still have struggled with that, both on the med, med provider side and the LISW side.
So, anytime we run into a student who's going after the LISW, we'd be very nice and very encouraging, is what you're saying?
Absolutely. And also, at Irelie Ball, what's kind of, kind of sweet for students, we do supervision. So, to be an LISW, you need two, two years of supervision. But what we've struggled with was then, we would provide the two years of supervision, and then they would go someplace else where they can get their loans paid off. That was always a struggle too, because it's a good recruiting tool that we provide, that supervision. But then, we applied to federal money to then provide loan repayment. The person actually has to apply for that, but we are a site where they could get, up in Ames, Ames only, where we could get reimbursement for that. So, I don't know. It's hard.
Thanks for keeping on trying.
We're trying, we're trying.
Just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
When did you start doing the Restore program?
Restore, we've been doing that, I believe, for a couple of years. Again, we were a pilot, and then, but we only serve, because I asked that question about how many people do we serve up here, because it's such a cool program. And we have, we had two clients up in Ames, and then we now, one, one of those clients wanted to go just to traditional services, so now we just have one. And that's why I wanted to talk about it, because I don't know if people know about it.
Well, I wonder, you didn't have any stats there on it, so that's why I was wondering.
That's, that's it. So, yeah, that's, we get a lot of referrals in Des Moines from the hospitals, because that's where they're gonna see that first episode. So, gosh, it's a great program with really great outcomes.
Have you talked with Mobile Crisis folks about it?
Yep, yep, yeah, they know about that program.
They know about it, because that would be, if that's where it's diverting, where you're getting the people diverted from the hospital, that would seem to be like the likely place.
Yeah.
The other thing I was gonna ask about was the assertive community treatment team, and I see you've had, you said you had 18. How many staff are devoted to the ACT team? Do you have a psychiatrist or psychiatry?
There is a med provider. So, currently, there's a med provider, and then there is a nurse, and, no, we're hiring a nurse for that program. The nurse we currently use is on staff, not, the way the pro, the model's supposed to work is, you're supposed to have all of these client, or staff within that team, right?
Yes, that's why I'm asking.
But if you don't have enough clients to pay, so you have to build up the number of clients before you can continue to add more staff. So, ideally, we want to have a full-time RN, which we're working on right now, because we are building up 18, is better than what's been. And we want a full-time employment person and substance abuse person. The med provider spends part-time in there, which we hope that will be beginning, beginning soon. And a therapist. So, we're not there yet, but as we continue to grow that team, we'll be able to add more staff to pay for the team, for the staff people.
Once you have the full team in place, how many people do you think it can provide services to? 40, 45, that range?
Yes, definitely, definitely. We have two teams in Des Moines, and we've been providing the service for 20 years. I've been doing it for a long time. That was, I did that when I first started, we started the PAC team, and we can provide, about 75 is the full team. Now, with the population, we're not likely to have 75 people, clients, based on the University of Iowa study up in Ames, we're not likely to have 75 clients, but we were hoping for about 40 to 45.
But you're using that University of Iowa model?
Yeah.
Williams model, okay.
Yep, yep.
Great.
It's a state model now.
I'm a, I'm a great fan of ACTs, because they really do keep people out of institutionalization, and I've seen.
Yeah.
But they're also struggling when it's a smaller community to set them up, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, we'll then go on to consideration of minutes. We have minutes from the July 2nd meeting and the July 2nd special meeting.
I would move that we approve both of them as they were presented.
I second that.
Second, any discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next, consideration of personnel actions as listed on our agenda. Motion?
I would move, I would move that we approve them as presented.
I second that.
Okay, I assume there's no discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. Then we have claims as submitted.
I move we approve the claims, to consider some claims as presented.
I second.
Okay. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Then the consent agenda with the, we removed Item 6, so I'd entertain a motion to approve consent agenda less Item 6.
I move that we approve everything on the consent agenda with the exception of Item 6.
And I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda less Item 6 is approved. We have no public hearing items, so we'll move on to additional items. And the first one is discussion and consideration of letter of support and financial contribution to the Ames Miracle Field and Playground. We have Drew Camp here, and we have Lynn Carey, President of Ames Foundation, and they have submitted several documents which are attached to the agenda, and I don't know if you want to say, make any brief comments, but I understand you're basically mainly here to answer questions.
Certainly. Thank you so much for your consideration today.
Good morning.
We are seeking a contribution of $25,000 to the Miracle Park project, which includes a miracle ball field and an inclusive playground to be located at Innes Grove Park in Ames, but will serve people of the entire community and beyond. This project is something that we've worked hard on for several years, and we're very near the end of our fundraising phase. We have an opportunity to apply for a community and attraction tourism grant from the state, and it does require county participation, so that's why we're here today.
I just have one question for you. In the application that came from us, there was language in there about the financial contributions from the city, I think it was from the city and the county that you couldn't count, is that correct?
That's correct. We met with the staff that directs the CAT grants, and they let us know that contributions that have been already made for the project cannot count, and it does have to be for capital.
Okay, okay. So, you'd be seeking any new grants, is what you can use this to?
Exactly.
For the match or whatever, for that? Okay, okay, that provides some clarification to me. I would make a motion to approve the $25,000 to go towards the Miracle League. It is a, I think it's a great program. It would be for public use. You're looking at predominantly the most disadvantaged individuals that would be utilizing the field, and if you haven't been to a Miracle League tournament, certainly suggest folks to, to participate or to, to see that, because it really is something special and incredible that goes on.
I'll go ahead, second, but I'd really like to have discussion. I hadn't had all my questions answered, or, okay? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Let's have discussion then, and any further questions? Okay, thanks. So, you've cut it back a bit now, and you explained the various funding levels. And so, as I looked at that, and I saw that you'd taken out some items that I'm wondering about being able to put back in, if you get the entire $200,000. So, can you run for me right now exactly what the budget, the total amount is versus where you started, what, what you're shooting for?
The current budget is $2,027,000, with the Ames Foundation providing an additional $50,000 of contingency funding. We fully intend, as the Ames Foundation, to continue fundraising, to add back in some of the items that were set aside. Their set aside is ad alternates. Actually, our contract with the, with the contractor includes all of those items, and we would just deduct them as we go. So, our intention is to add those items back in. First and foremost, the item that we would like to add back in is the lighting for the ball field. It's not a necessary component, not every Miracle Field has that. We think that it would add a component that would be really exciting for the participants. It also would mean that the Parks and Rec in Ames could use that field for other purposes too, which is a good thing. So, our intent is to continue fundraising up to the level that's just below 2.2 million. That's our intent.
Okay, so, if you got the entire grant of 200,000, are you saying that you're at 1.8 million in other fundraising? Okay, right. So, then I'm going to express a concern. This concern I have expressed before on other grants related to the Iowa Economic Development, whatever, thank you. Okay, I get lost with the change of the words, the last word, but, and it has to do with the fact that the authority, or the whatever board it has that's approving a various grant, has come back and told government entities in the past that, no, we don't think you've put enough money in. And of course, that happened to Johnson County with the Corralville Project. So, I did call and spoke to Maisy, one of the two people who are in charge of this enhanced Iowa program, and she did say, yes, in fact, her board could do that, not would, but could, if they felt that there wasn't enough participation from the government entities, but they'd try to work together. So, my concern, and I'm expressing this as a concern here, is that if they come back and take a look at what the original plans for the field were and what it could be versus what you're asking for, because there's about still a $200,000 gap, if you make the 2.1 to 2.2, right? And they would say, no, we think that like the county should kick in more money. And at that particular point, you know, it puts us in a very awkward position. We approve a dollar amount, we, we believe that we can afford, we know what's coming down the pike, or we have a pretty good estimation of what's coming down the pike, and then all of a sudden, what if we get hit? And the Johnson County one really sticks out in my mind, because if I seem to remember correctly, that the required that they had to kick in was one and a half times more than what, or two and a half, it ended up from 100,000 to like 250,000. I mean, it was a substantial, all right? So, I just want to express my concerns and make it clear that there's no guarantee that if the I EVA comes back and wants more money from us, that we'd be willing to give it. And it places us then in an awkward position of a lot of community push on us, when we know what we need monetarily-wise, okay? So, I'm gonna, that's my expression.
And that's a very legitimate concern. Hopefully, I can assuage those fears a little bit. We did have a very productive meeting with staff that manages the CAT grant. We laid out our plans. We were very frank with where we are with fundraising, and basically, we're given the green light. The expectation would be, not be to come back to the county from that conversation, and I, you know, that wasn't a binding conversation by any means, but very enthusiastic about our plans. And we also, the Ames Foundation is continuing to seek funding from other sources, and we do have a couple of announcements coming up very soon that would also help us assuage your fears in that regard. I have the utmost confidence that, that this $200,000 grant from, from the CAT, if received, would allow us to add back in amenities, rather than just get to the base amount.
And one thing I will add too, is the fact that we can't make any guarantees, obviously, but we do have a sample, and a sample is Dubuque, and they recently received some funding for a similar project, but they received 500,000 in funding. Our project, we're asking for 200,000, so a simple math would make you think that, that that seems like a logical number. Obviously, we can make no guarantees, but just comparing apples to apples in that regard, it seems reasonable.
All right, thank you. And a couple of other questions, maybe just clarifications or reassurances. I understand you're asking a one-time commitment for the county, there's no ongoing operating expenses that you will be requesting in the county. It's the one-time commitment for the purpose of matching the CAT grant?
That is the case. The, the actual park will be turned over, the Miracle Field and Inclusive Playground will be turned over to the City of Ames Park and Recreation Department, and they will maintain.
And I also understand that you-
And I also understand that you have identified some money that the city will be participating in, in terms of some park upgrades, that that can be used as matches well? That would be the city's contribution?
Yes, for the CAT grant, we are, the project is actually a larger project that includes other inclusive aspects of Innes Grove Park. So the city will be providing accessible restrooms, drinking fountain, wider sidewalks, things like that.
And have they assured you that that will be considered as a contribution then, or is?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. The other thing that I had noticed was that there are Miracle Fields in Ankeny and Des Moines, which are fairly close. The letter of support, which we'll also have to deal with, it's on the agenda. We did talk about that this would attract people from other counties as well. And I did happen to be talking to Lynn, and I asked her, I said, but there's two in DePoe County. But what it does do is allow teams, have teams to come here. And that's why it would attract and kind of be part of a network. So that was something that I thought was worth thinking about too, as well. So those are all my questions, I believe, to, any other questions?
No, except for I just apologize for making my motion before you asked your question, so.
I think that's okay.
It's okay.
We could still ask questions. It's not a problem.
We're not shy.
Some would actually say you should have a motion before you discuss it all. We kind of do questions, motions, further discussions, but we get it. Works. It works. So if there's no further discussion, is there, we'll vote then. Let's see. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Passes. We also did have a letter of support on the agenda. And we need to, since it's on the agenda separately, we need a motion for the letter of support which you need for the grant, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the letter of support that was drafted?
I'll move that we approve the letter of support as it appears. I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Letter of support's also approved. Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for the thorough job you did in sending us the information. That really helps.
Thank you so much. The entire county will thank you.
Have a good rest of the day.
Okay, next, whoever engineer, Darren Moon, for consideration of a resolution 20-06, speed limit on 19th Street. Darren?
Morning.
Good morning.
Oh, no, you're going to have to shut it off.
Shut it off.
Dang, have we figured that out yet? Why?
It's kind of a pretty fuchsia color.
Jerry, was it yours that it did it last time on?
They did it last time, so.
Oh, okay, all right. So at least.
I think it was Amelia.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, maybe that's something that we could check in with IT later. They came last, it came up last time, didn't they, on it? Yeah.
The time that was smashing, like, was for a while.
Let's just put it on. She'll check.
Something with the internal, something.
It's only technology. It's not perfect.
Makes me feel better.
Okay, there it goes. Blue on it, that looks good.
Okay, this is a resolution for a speed limit request. This is the southeast portion of Nevada. Here's the county hospital out here, 19th Street. The request is for this portion right here. The signal limits go down to right here, this location, and then it's, the road is 50-50, half-city, half-county, up to about right here. What's for this probably is the new four-way stop here. The city, the speed limit's coming into that. They wanted to lower it over the overpass because there's going to be a stop condition here now that they got in place. Typically, speed limits when it comes to secondary roads, we do a speed study, and we do a 95th percentile study on it when we set it that way. When it comes to areas budding cities and where it's half and half, I typically just kind of go with the city and let them set what they want. We'll typically go along with it because it's really entrance into the city. The city has already passed their ordinance resolution, whatever they passed, to make this 35, so we would just be matching what they have already done. Initially, I expressed some concern with the city that I thought went a little bit too far. It goes down to here, that's the city on the line on the west half. But they assured me, they felt this parcel was going to be developed in the near future. So they just wanted to get it all taken care of now. The traffic use is starting to slow down a little sooner. I think the hospitals expanded or something. So that's the rationale why it goes so far south. Otherwise, it's, unless more has any concerns, I would recommend we match the city's 35 mile speed limit.
Questions?
I have one. I just have one question. So is it, right now, is it just, is it like at 50 or 45, or kind of just wide open?
Yeah, state is, state code is 55 during the day, 50 at night for secondary roads on the coast.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Lawrence, any questions? None for me. Okay, now entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve setting the speed limit to 35 miles an hour.
I would second that.
Okay, any discussion? If not, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Darren. And are you up for the next item as well?
Yep, a few more.
A few more? Okay, well, we'll keep talking. Road use maintenance agreement.
This is for the update to the wind farm in northeast Story County. There's 100 wind turbines that are going to redo the blades on. Each of three blades, that 300 blades are bringing in. We've been working on this agreement for a few months now, the road maintenance agreement. The good part is this is the same company and the contractor that worked with last time, 2008, when the breaking went in. We really didn't have many issues. We had road issues, but they were very quickly responding to those issues. So I don't have a lot of concerns about the actual working with them on it. Next area is the company with wind turbines and the blackeners will be the contractors. What this agreement does essentially states we've got to do a road inventory before anything starts, a video inventory. It also turns some maintenance over to the contractor during construction. We'll do our regular maintenance out there, but if their construction is causing additional needs, they will assist and maintain our roads and home rock out there for the roads. It requires them to put down dust control in front of houses in intersections because it will definitely be seeing more traffic in the area. And it requires a $750,000 bond if you put that upfront for road damages. How I came to that number is that's kind of what the first two phases added up to be for road damages. I don't think we'll be anywhere near that this time because about 500,000 of that was E29. They really tore it up. And since then, we have improved that road all related, and I don't see that happening here. And the majority of the damage that happened the first day was due to all the rock hauling. It was nonstop, rock trucks that went out there, and it was in the spring thaw, and it was terrible conditions. So that's what did the road damage. They'll be doing this in the summer, fall, when roads are more firm up. This year, a little differently. So it could be still some soft spots, but I don't think we'll come near that damage range. I'm comfortable with the 750,000. And that is for most part, we do have a meeting with them this afternoon to start the discussion we're going to have with them on. Build out a bunch of radiuses because the building loads are really long, so they have to build out the turn radiuses on a lot of corners. Additional driveways, stuff like that, but we'll start that conversation this afternoon. But I would recommend approval of the road maintenance agreement.
Board, any questions?
None. It appears to take care of everything that was learned from last time, so I'm comfortable with it.
I just have one question. Do you know kind of the length of time that you're going to have that increased weight with the roads as they're repairing or upgrading their blades?
The increase in weight?
Well, with the additional truck, the additional, the trucks and stuff that will be going through on the roads there?
Oh, the actual, I thought you were going to say weight.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no.
Okay. Loading, last time they had heavier loads, actually, the blades aren't really the heavy part, so they are doing some internal component changes to the main unit, but they're not bringing in the whole unit, but that was the heavier load last time. All these loads are actually under legal loads anyway.
Gotcha, okay.
But we still have to give oversight from that because of the length of them. And they won't be able to take Highway 65 this time up to Colo. There's a height restriction there that these will fit to there. Last time, they all had to go up into the Morris for Harton County and come back down and have to fix it. It's a little easier route, so, and they won't be coming across E29, except for right in there.
So when will they start, and when will they be done by?
Well, they're already kind of behind the original schedule, so I'm not sure. We were supposed to, originally have the video inventory done by May 31st, but the agreement had improved this, hasn't been on that, so they put the video by July 31st. They want to have the inventory done. Like I said, we're meeting really for the first time this afternoon, so hopefully it'll be another time. I think they want to be following that.
Be done by harvest?
I would assume that, but it's a, it's a lot of work. The cranes are so large to put these up. That's the main issue there. As much as possible, you don't want to tear these down. Takes a lot of time to tear the cranes down, so part of the scheme is we'll allow them to take these cranes over our roads. They have to build up a path, sand, travel, and not to tear it down. Speed up the process, but I really don't know how long it's going to take in that medium. They're very hard to win the others.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion for the maintenance agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve the maintenance agreement, the Story Wind Road Use Maintenance Agreement.
A second.
Discussion? Not, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson, aye?
Aye.
Merkin, aye? Pardon me.
That's okay.
I voted for you.
L, L, L. It all goes in a row.
Okay. Next, Darren, you're still up. Windstream utility permits. What do we have here?
Okay, this is a new item for us. Typically, utility permits, I approve those, and this one is a new thing coming up that I thought the board would need to submit on. What this is, it's a cell tower, but it's more for wireless internet more than cell service. This, but the height of the pole is what's so different. It's a 100-foot tall pole. It's not that wide of a pole, it's only about two-foot diameter at the bottom, and it gets down closer to a foot diameter at the top. It's just the height that's a new thing for us. We do, I'll probably bring Jerry up at some point too, there is a county ordinance that deals with towers, but this is within the right way, so we're kind of stuck in the middle. A lot of counties are getting hit with this now. It's a new thing coming on. We're caught with a handful of counties. Lee County, Union County, Woodbury, Harrison, and even Boone County, Taven County have all approved the east and going the road right away. Johnson County is in a similar situation to us, are currently going through it with the board on deciding how they want to afford it, because they probably have a tower ordinance. A lot of counties probably don't have a tower in this place. Ethan's been reviewing, there is a code section that deals with the towers. It's called 8C, Iowa Cell Sighting Act. They confused into it, it says it's repealed July 1st of 2020, so that was last week. So we're not sure if this is even still in effect, but they have case versus admitted prior to that date. Remind, let me show you where these are actually located. What's going on here is, talking to another county, they were given a little more explanation. That's one of my big issues. They didn't come and explain this to us. I think they feel like they have a code section since they can do this, they want to do this as little as possible. And the Department of Commerce and the code that say we're not supposed to really question that much, so we're not supposed to prove it. But another county told me that what they're shooting for is about a five-mile spacing between these towers. These are the five that they applied for. That way, they're supposed to give rural internet service through wireless instead of having to bore cable all the way to these new towers. So from that perspective, in the roads, I do like that aspect, of not getting the turn up roads and the tower, putting any lines available to the wireless. I assume this is going to supply high-speed internet service to some more rural areas. That's the other positive to it. To be a little more specific on the sites, this is northeast of Nevada, T Avenue, location's right here, off of Gravel Road. There's a wind turbine right next to it that's much taller. See this one, causing a lot of concerns, it's a little close to town. This is Sand Hill Trail, and this is one that actually we learned about first. They actually put some sort of environmental notice in the newspaper that Jerry found out about, and the landlords heard about that and said they were concerned about having the tower close to the property. So we may have some property concerns about these things, but I'd like you aware of that. This is Sand Hill Trail and 260, that's the tower. I'm fairly close to a home, but there's quite a hill here, so I'm sure they're putting right on top of the hill for that location. This is Iowa Center, just off of Gravel Road. They've already got some utility boxes in here, it's infrastructure edge, so that's why they're placing it there. This is a E63 curve. There is a current tower here. Maybe going close to that, this tower is much taller than they're maybe putting in, so I see a lot of concerns here. I think there's some things in that code section that says we can't require them to go have a date on that existing tower. Something else we have to think about.
Say that again, Darren.
There was something in the code section that said we couldn't require them to go on existing towers correspond, share power.
Oh, okay. Can't share towers.
And then the last one's down by this Colo, or Collins, sorry, Collins Highway 210 feeds into Highway 65. This is a property portion, so located right there.
So how close are those to the actual shoulder of the road?
We would require, see typically, I have to allow utilities to use the public road right, but I can require where they go within the property. So I would put them all the way out to 33 feet. They're all in gravel, I believe, except the one E63 at the lower corner. Typically, we have 33 feet of gravel.
They're going to be right up against lot lines.
They go right up to the edge.
I'm going to ask, take me back here a little bit from, because I have some really basic questions here. First of all, this identifies itself as internet technology, but are you saying that it's the same type of technology that's used for cell phones?
I'm not saying that. What I was getting at is, the bill was, the title of the bill was Iowa Cell Sighting Act. That said cell, but then it gets into definitions, gets into all kinds of wireless definitions.
Okay, so.
I think this is probably the fault of it, is the potential wireless.
So, and that is a bill that was just passed?
This was 26.
All right, so we're talking about existing legislation then. All right, thank you. So then you referenced the 100 feet. Most telephone wire tire posts are not that tall, correct?
They're typically 30 to 40 feet. We do have some tall ones up along Lincoln Highway, kind of by the school, north of the school, that goes about 70, so we're getting close to that.
All right. And then the neighbors down Sand Hill Trail who heard about this and became upset, what, can you summarize what their concerns were?
I refer to Jerry.
Thank you on this.
Yeah, they actually contacted our office. They saw that there was a notification in the local paper, and it actually cited their address as the location for the proposed utility pole or tower, and they were concerned about it. And normally, our process is set out such that that when we receive requests for new communications equipment, towers, they go through a conditional use permit process. And it's, we start with conceptual review, staff reviews them, goes to planning and zoning commission, and then the board of adjustment makes the final decision. But there's a number of things that we look at with our ordinance, like the co-location factor. We ask for coverage maps to show, you know, the current condition, proposed condition. Questions come up about interference with other communication networks. There's a lot of things that we ask with that CUP process that you're probably not going to get with a permit to locate in a right of way, which is something to consider too.
So we've got on one hand, a situation where if we consider it a utility pole as we think of as a telephone or electrical wire pole, Darren gets to issue the permit and just say, I can tell you where you're going to put it in the right of way, period. Then we've got the other extreme, which is going through an entire conditional use permit process to put up each one of these, correct? And so that is why, Darren, you really brought, you brought it to us, is what do we as a county want to do with addressing this? Okay, thank you. That's where I'm.
I feel like I have to allow it, but there's some sections in this section code that says if you have a current tower ordinance.
Zoning regulation.
You can restrict. So I feel like I need to prove for roads, utility, a normal permit, but then if Jerry has something, I would restrict that. I think what we wanted to could.
And we do. And it says that a tower needs to be, what, 150% of its height away from?
Yeah, there's setback requirements from residential districts and from right of ways and from property lines.
Because we've held people to that before.
And those are more power type. And this is just a wooden pole that we have out there all over the place.
So why, so our rationale for having our tower ordinance and that setback is what, Jerry?
It's, I think it's more thorough, comprehensive review, and you're looking at all those factors. You know, if there is an issue with the structure itself, if it falls, it's setback adequate space from adjacent property lines or the right of way. You're looking at the communication network itself. A lot of times, they're constructed such that other carriers can co-locate. Just the number of factors that you're looking at.
What about traffic as a factor? Because that's the one that hit me as I was trying to weigh in my mind what I thought really, why one approach versus the other. And I kept on thinking about what you're saying, the co-locate, or the number of times that if in fact this is more of that cellular type of transmission or, you know, the higher degree. The only time people really go out on a utility pole is if the wires are down or there's a real malfunction. Whereas cell towers can get more frequent traffic just for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, it's still pretty low though. Usually like a monthly visit, maybe once or twice.
Okay. Thank you for that.
In most cases. So it's pretty limited.
So Darren, I think you were saying that you have the obligation to allow them in the right of way unless we have an ordinance. And then we, and then they should follow our ordinance? Is that your, or have you talked to the county attorney about this? I mean, is the next question.
Well, and I need to add too, that we have a provision in Chapter 85, which is right before our definitions, that talk about exceptions to our zoning regulations. And there's exceptions for public utilities. And that's, I think, part of what we've been trying to look at to discover whether or not this company, which is Windstream Communications, is actually considered a public utility. And so far, I don't think we've concluded that they are.
We have an assistant county attorney here, and I don't know if you've got a chance to look at this, Ethan?
I'll address the timing for under here.
Okay.
There's a section in this code that says within 30 days, we have to tell them if their application is complete or not. We're probably beyond that point, and I think their application is probably complete. Beyond that, we have 150 days to give them actual response.
And when did we receive the application?
I would say it was June 25.
Toward the end of June. That's when it stayed.
25th.
That was before that. That's the date on the application.
Okay, so it's late June. So we've got plenty of time to look into this. If we, if we say their application is complete, which you were saying, you're indicating you think it is, there's 30 days. So end of July, you need to tell them if it's complete. Then another 150 days to answer it. Okay.
And make a decision on the application.
And make a decision.
Yeah, it's important to point out that this Chapter 8C was passed in 2015, and then it's set to sunset on July 1st, 2020. So not a couple weeks ago, but next year.
Right.
A five-year sunset provision on that. And this is, this is the code section that a lot of the different jurisdictions, different counties have pointed to as the concern for them in regulating this activity by these cell companies or communications companies. I think, reading through 8C point three, it tells us the things we can't do as a county in considering these applications. We can't inquire into their business plans. We can't inquire into lease arrangements. We can't do these certain things. And then it says in two, we can't evaluate based on the potential for co-location. And it says, notwithstanding that provision, we can inquire an explanation regarding the reason for choosing the proposed location and the reason why they did not choose co-location. And they have to show that the coverage, the site selected would result in increased coverage or service functionability. So there's different things we can consider. And I think what you're getting at is in that 150 days, we do need to consider these things. And I'd be leery of telling them that their application is complete, but I'll require them to provide those different explanations on why they can't, for instance, at the one location, go with the existing cell tower. Why they need to be right next to it within a couple, a couple hundred yards. Well, how far is it?
Five hundred feet.
Okay, 500 feet.
I was thinking, there was a second one where there was close to another cell tower, wasn't there?
So, yeah. 8C point three says we can't require them to do co-location, but we can require them to provide an explanation regarding why they did not choose co-location. And that explanation shall include a sworn statement from the individual who has authority over placing the tower to tell us why they won't co-locate. So I think, we want to be leery of just saying, yes, this is a completed application. Because the 30-day time limit, if we don't get back to them within 30 days saying, here's the deficiencies in the application, it is deemed complete. And then the clock starts on 150 days. So within this first 30 days, I think we need to tell them whether or not we think it's complete or not. Then again, we have to go back to the ultimate question that Jerry and I are discussing, and that's whether or not they are a public utility and whether or not we can impose any of our own ordinances over this project.
And why requesting the right of way rather than on private properties?
I think strategically and logistically, it's easier for them to get that rather than pursuing, using with a private land.
Usually with these, height is key. So it's kind of interesting that they're going to locate at a 95-foot or 100-foot elevation, when usually, I mean, at minimum, they're just under 200 feet, because at 200 or greater than 200, there's a lighting requirement that the FAA requires. And that's, so usually, the higher, the better. And then other carriers are also interested, which, you know, to share that space.
I'm, I'm thinking about right of ways, the majority of our right of ways, which are along roads, which are along areas where the public occasionally will travel or access, okay? So 100-foot pole, two-feet diameter, falls and just happens to fall on a busy day, or there's a car, or, you know, or whatever. And I'm thinking of a safety issue about being in the right of way, as opposed to being able, if they access private land and have to go through that, making, negotiating with the property owner. But it can push those away from the public right of way, the public roadways. That's my biggest concern in this. I appreciate everybody sharing everything. And it sounds like, yeah, the sunset and all of this are considerations. I get concerned about thinking about a 100-foot pole standing next to the side of the road. Our right of ways on roadways are only 30 feet, correct, Darren, from the center line?
That's true. With the passenger door, you have power poles in the same location already. That power pole that came down, it fell across the road.
Thank you. I now will feel so much safer as I drive on roads from now. But thank you. That's a good point, that maybe there's a point about where it doesn't matter. What are power poles? How tall are power poles usually?
Say typically 30 to 40 feet.
30 to 40 is.
Some of the bigger ones, yeah, close to 70.
And I've seen some of the larger ones recently going through. Okay. Well, it's obviously safety. That's why we have the ordinance we have. This is the first time. My thought is this is the first time we've had this request in the county, and it probably does behoove us right now to find out all the information we can and to utilize the time we have. Just from my viewpoint here, it seems like the three of you have all the questions pretty much in mind that we might ask, unless there's any additional questions. My, my thought is that we ask Jerry and Darren and Ethan to work on a response to this with all the concerns and the issues that they've expressed. Is there anything?
No, I guess my only concern was as well, I mean, you guys asked a lot of the questions that I had written down and stuff, since I was just writing all the answers. But when you're looking at going into the right of way, is then are we setting a precedence that then you, opens the door to other utilities that would be looking at the same, same thing? And I certainly would want to have a little bit more information before we make any final determination.
I agree. Precedent came in my mind too, and especially, once again, with this sunset, with a changing industry. We have a communications company who then, are they becoming, getting into what has been considered a utility?
Right.
I, I support that. Lisa, I want to present.
This is FYI. Just about a year and a half, two years ago, we did have a request coming right up from Boone County mine, which was more like a cell tower. It had a wider base. And I had some safety concerns on that one, but they were getting shielded with garbage. Our initial response, I believe, was we just, I said no, and they just, we don't have a lot of precedent staying on whether we had to do it or not, because they just kind of, it did come up once, and that was much more substantial.
Thank you.
I think it's important to recognize that this legislature gave us this statutory framework in 8C, and so we have a process to follow. And I think it's important to follow the process for everyone. So for all future, all future applicants, they're going to know whether they're going to follow this process, at least until it sunsets in 2020.
Right.
But this is the same process that Darren alluded to, that the different counties he's talked to, the engineers, they're wrestling with the implications of applying this statute.
I just checked the permit, and it is June 25th.
So 30 days to respond.
30 days to respond. Are you able to work together and get a response in that time? Can we just call that direction from the board?
Yeah. Thank you.
You okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So directed. Thank you very much for giving all of that. Next, we have departmental reports. Darren?
Darren's back again.
You're still there.
Still here.
Okay.
Well, I just started by saying last five months or so, but it's extremely challenging for our department to do the severe winter, followed by some flooding, and then soft spring gravel road conditions. Gravel roads are finally starting to firm up. We've never seen a take this long before. We still have some soft spots in the July, just unheard of. And it's still just take time to get the roads back in shape with the proper crown. It's going to take time. I gave utility gravel road presentation a few months back. I guess the main points came out of that was, when you hear the public say it's gradually getting worse over the years. Last year was the best spring. Oh, you never remember. We had no frost boils in the spring. It went from the best to the worst. So the roads aren't getting terribly worse. We put as much travel as we can feasibly afford. And when they say just get two inches of rock on the road, I think it's a number to what that would cost. Typically, we put about a quarter inch thickness of rock on a quarter of the county per year. To put two inches across the entire county would be about $12. We have to do that about every year to keep up, because we lose a lot of rock every year. It'd be very expensive to do that, but we're used to doing less than what we probably need, but we get by. But sometimes with other nature winds. Say, we experienced some flooding early on. It did reach a level of FEMA funding. We did get some last year for similar flooding events, and we're finally getting that finalized and getting that funding from last year. That flow over 100,000, we got more than that. Pictures of some of the frost boils. And then beyond frost boils, it was just all roads were just soft. So we had hauling conditions going on, and we drove over the incision for a month or two. This was just taken last week. You can see there's new rock on the sides, and mud just keeps popping up in the middle as it hinges the line. It's unheard of. There is a letter, all four of you guys that you need to know, Hamilton County, Houston, put together a two or three days' letter on helping dealing with it. It's pretty much statewide. We're all dealing with the same thing. It kind of puts it all into itself where that's due.
Thank you.
And then just as of last week, we had another flood event. This is 260th and Sand Hill Trail, and we're going to sit down here in between water just pouring over the gravel roads. It's pretty much isolated, thankfully, to this area right here. I just talked to Lisa before this meeting. Lisa Mark, you live right in this location. She had five acres in the rain gate, and then fell in a very short time frame. So we were out July 3rd into the 4th fixing these roads. Want to touch on, the wet springs also cause vegetation to grow very quickly. We have been mowing for safety reasons, even though the state law requires us to wait until July 15th to mow. We gather, it's probably, we've been mowed twice by now because it's growing so fast. We are allowed to mow for safety reasons. So rock hauling, this is what we did by contract. We usually get this done by March, April, but we had to push it back due to the soft road conditions. So we contracted with Mark Bay to haul all of these blue miles. That cost of that was about $487,000. And it's about a quarter of the county, not quite a quarter, but our crews are hauling what we call spot rock. We haul the individual spots. They're bad, so we don't put them on that. These are just the roads that need tighter models of rock. We hauled about an additional $400,000 worth of rock with our own crews. Touch on the new salt contract. We had a salt issue again last year at delivery times. We struggled with. Fortunately, we started out with two that are bin in the bay that can haul, hold about 1,000 tons. We did, this one's usually salt, sand mix, and this is all salt. We made the decision to go all salt and pack it in there, and we liked what we did, because our contractor last year only supplied about 75 tons out of the 800 we had by contract. By the time the winter was over, we got the rest after winter. The sun was just good, and that's all due to bottleneck in Ames where they get it off the railroad. They can only get so much off of the time, and the railroad only delivers so often. So we're always fighting against DOT and Ames for our salt deliveries. The good news is we got a new supplier, Black Strap out of Nebraska. We're up to $77 a ton. Last year was $67 a ton. We sold it. DOT warned us it was kind of going out of the way. There was some bar issues on Mississippi River and stuff. But Black Strap will deliver directly by truck, so we won't have a bottleneck issue. See how gross it is. Hopefully.
So that's about a 14% increase that we'll bear this year. Did we build, did you happen off the top of your head to remember in our fiscal year 20 budget, what you allocated for salt? Did we increase the amount in case we have that added?
We left it at about, our normal was about 100,000, that is, salt, sand, and calcium ore mixed with it. We left it at about, our normal was about a hundred thousand, that is salt, sand, and our calcium ore we mixed with it. As I noted in here, due to the late deliveries, thirty-five thousand dollars. That's why my team actually carried over in the last week, so we got paid on that twenty-sirability thirty-five thousand. How many, because of that, so we nailed them in that, but I was paid out.
Okay, thank you.
Construction project updates. These are the seven that we have planned for this year. It's typical for the county, especially story county, because we're competing with Ames, who has most of work in the summer. When the students are gone, our projects get pushed back to the fall, usually. We have one paving, that's E63 going out of Collins into Marshall County. And then we have six box coves there. The contract is supposed to be moving in toward the end of the month. The other good thing about delaying the box coves is our project inspector has been on military duty for about a month and a half, so he'll be back in next week, so it's good timing on that. Construction project design, 220th Street, which is thirteen extension paving plans are complete, and we are working on right-of-way purchasing. We bonded for a number of paving projects, and one of them, I will need to talk to Lisa fairly soon on the timing of bonding. We're not going to need it for construction probably till about a year from now when we start paving that road. But we do need to purchase the right-of-way for that, so we'll push that off as long as we can, but probably come on a little sooner than we originally thought just to pay for an additional right-of-way. We started design work on Five thirty, which is the University section south of Ames. We're coordinating some utility, we have major water line and some utility poles that we have to work on on that project. Working on the Hickory Grove overlay project and seven other bridge coves in the next. The bridge bungling grant, that's something we've been hopefully waiting on a response from the feds for about six months now. It's supposed to longer to get slated, the less likely it's going to happen. But the DOT was pretty positive that we hit about four hundred thousand for story county to replace that bridge that's circling there on E18. It's getting delayed for some reason, we're not sure why. End of FY budget. Final expenses were about eighty-five percent of our amended budget amount, and that was almost entirely due to the carryover construction, which we have every year. We're not sure if that construction happened before or after July 1st. It did. None of it happens, so we'll get a pushback, so we understand. The major items that we overran in FY19 were overtime. We doubled our overtime to fifty thousand. We spent a hundred due to the severe February and March winter conditions. We had a lot of, also a lot due to the severe winter and also thanks to equipment. So we had some major equipment repairs. A picture of our mortgage that was completely dismantled and shit. That repair alone was seventy thousand dollars.
Darren, on the overtime, we have some caps when we're moving over from the general fund and the rail services fund over to how much the law will allow us to put into the secondary roads fund. Is overtime included in part of that entire cap amount, or is payroll separate from that?
No, that is included.
All right. Thank you.
We were able to manage a few bridge repairs in between all the road damage compared to spring. One was a driveway bridge. We don't have a couple of these fortunately, but this is only to provide access to the farm ground behind it, but it's in the county right-of-way, so we are responsible for it. We debated this years ago whether we replace this with a new cove or just try to repair the structure. We made the decision to try to repair it for now. The landlord was complaining that his equipment keeps getting bigger and heavier, and the bridge wasn't able to take it because it was posted at least twelve tons. We got this up with about ten thousand dollars of repairs, a complete new deck, and we doubled up the beam spacing, so it's a legal bridge now. And we kind of created a backbone, which is able to replace the ton. Since we did this, he has called and he's not happy still. Sixteen foot wide, which shouldn't be wide enough to get most of the engineer in. He was still liking the cove, but that's an issue I think we might get it for now. Hopefully, he doesn't play overload this and crack the bridge, but we'll keep a close eye on him for a while. We're going to post it, even though it's legal. A legal bridge, we typically don't blow post, so we're just going to post it in case he does overload it. It gives us some more legal rights to go after him if he overloads it. Great bridge.
Am I correct in saying that as I look at this photo, that the original bridge we replaced, is it the abutments? Is that the right term?
Correct.
Yeah, right there, came out that far. It came out, what, a couple of years?
Yeah, the width is the same as the width.
Thank you.
We didn't shorten. And this, if you recall, we talked, this is that parcel that there's a hard by the bytrum.
Yes.
It's allowed these farmers to take access off of that, and this is one way they can deal with that. There are some covert issues on the hard bytrum. Farmers are concerned about, well, they don't like these, so this should help the situation for a while. Another bridge, this is what we call Isaac Walton Bridge down south. Shooting bridges, flooding vents this spring. Dam is the first beam and took out the guard rail. We ended up just removing one beam. This was a little bit wider bridge than a lot of ours. We took out that first beam and put the railing back on top. So it should have a little effect. And this is, this is one of those bridges on our list of bridges that we're probably going to raise. And we're trying to get as much life out of this as we possibly can. We designed a new bridge about ten years ago, and it was going to be about four or five hundred pound. No, it's correct. It was going to be four to five hundred feet. So much more than that. Because it's such a low area, it just overtops it so easily. As we said, it's not that important up there. I'll be probably close this one. Once this is done. A number of also holes behind back walls opened up. We've been dealing with the flooding. We put a lot of concrete box coves, and one of the positives of those that has a floor. These little wood bridges do not have floors, so the stream constantly is degrading and getting deeper. And when it gets deeper below the back wall, it sucks the material underneath and creates these stuck holes. It is safety concerning, so the coves, I'd be like them because of that, so. More issues on, this was Memorial Day weekend, the day before. Landowner calls us, they dead-end road in the far southeast corner of the county. They live at the end of the dead-end road and the pipe. Their only access out, they said there was a hole, but when we got there, the hole went all the way through the road. So we had to call. You're going to hear me comment a lot about Fridays. I appreciate not working on Fridays. It's something that we're fortunate. Every single Friday, this is on Friday, we've had something come up, we had to call crews and stuff. Murphy's a lot of guests, but it's happened even last weekend, and it was flooding most everything. More coves that were, had the holes all the way through the roads we had to fix, typical stuff. Then, early spring flooding always creates, the farm debris gets pushed into our coves and bridges. And again, this was a Friday, we called in a mortuary on a Friday to come. This core was completely clogged with cornstalks, and it's hard to tell what the edge of the road is. When the cornstalks get built up, the next is slipped off the road because of that. You put tow truck in back, we had to tow that one out, and they're so deep. Another towing situation, this was just an air driver went off a bridge and they had to actually pick it up. I would assume. Stuff like that happens quite often, unfortunately. Mostly undergraders, but I need that. Move on to the Hickory Grove coves. This is a road we had closed around Hickory Grove because, this is a picture conservation sentence, they're draining the lakes, so both sides typically just equalize through these pipes, but since they drain one side, it sucked all the water through, and it actually went underneath the covert. These are very large coves. So we tried to sandbag it the best we could. That wasn't enough. They continually sucked them through until it started taking the material and made it way up to the shoulder. At that point, I said we got close to it. We couldn't do any repairs until the water got below that level, so it was just kind of a waiting game. As the water settled through here, it sucked more material out, and that covert actually settled in turn. So the road dropped like six inches. It's hard to see the picture, but the road was already closed at that point. So we weren't sure if it was repairable at that point, but we did come up with a repair option. We worked with Denko, that's the routing, pressure routing. They put these pillows in here and tell them what grout. That sealed off the end, and then they routed from the top. You can see all the grout came out the bottom. There's two of these very large pipes that are eighteen foot wide. People actually boat through these. Pictures of the pressure routing, pressurizing that end. It does it, so much pressure, it actually starts bending the covert underneath, so... Had one little indentation on one of them that they cut it off in time. And then, in the end, we had to do the concrete patch. We did that with our crews to replace the bumpy and subtle portions. Got the patch done. We're hoping to get this open, but what's going on now is you can see the dirt right here. They're hauling, got their picture after. Part of the contract through conservation is they got to remove all this silt up here. It's a lot of sloppy material. They put them in trucks, but that's clear. And then trucks come out of this driveway and drive down the road. It's not even mild that's right, but it's such monkey material, it leaks out the back of the trucks, and they really don't have a way to prevent that, so it just makes an absolute mess out of the highway. There's a row of houses behind this to the south. They have access around the lake and pave route to get out. Conservation's talked with them, asked if they'd be comfortable leaving the road closed. I have concern about safety. We require them to bring a broom out because it gets monkey, and then it rains, and it's slick. And then they come out and broom it, and you can't see it, and it's a nasty... Think the best option is to leave this closed. They keep saying there's two to three weeks of work left here, but every time it rains, it sets that back. I think you got the picture. Yeah. That last rain event, we got this in their excavator. They did not remove it from the hallway to the excavator. I think they ruined that excavator, so that's a sudden that a little bit too...
We're still there as of yesterday.
Is it?
Yeah, that's the set of conservation.
Can we turn it into a water feature, maybe?
Maybe I'll even do with it by now.
But that's kind of what's going behind the road closure. We haven't had a lot of complaints on the closure. I kind of wanted to get it open for the holiday, fourth holiday weekend, but we re-leave it closed. And hopefully get this done in a couple of weeks. Need more road issues there. The S27 issue we had, we had to close that two weeks ago now. A hole had shown up right in the wheel path. Whenever you see a hole on top, that means there's much bigger wood underneath. So this one was a little scary safety-wise, but we got in there and right-of-way that same day and patched it, knowing we didn't know what was going on below, but we had to throw it back open. So the temporary patch was amended, which cured up very fast. We were almost certain the cause was, these are both utility locates, water line and the gas line. Or like that's like going back to the new house. We're almost sure they poured through a road tile and caused that to collapse. But we dug, the tile, tiles are usually on the outside. This road was relocated before they paved it a long time ago, so the tile is actually almost at the centerline. It was not a good situation. But we had about a twenty-five foot stretch of tiles completely collapsed and broken. The utilities were much deeper, so they didn't cause it, or we can't prove they caused it. We can't belabor this work, but they may have caused some. They sure appeared the tile had been like that for a long time, so... We got the tile fixed, and we had to put a patch back. And there was another issue just down the road. The tile was plugged on the outside of these big trees. Water was actually shooting three feet up in the air through the pavement cracks. It was so much pressure on that tile, that there was a five-inch roof and six-inch tile, so it was absolutely blocked. We got that fixed while we had the road closed.
Wow.
S27 is a very difficult road to close. It's an eight or nine mile stretch of real paved sidewalks. So if we ever close this, traffic just starts taking all the ground, it creates a vast mess. We got it done in about three days and put a lot of plant warning out. The residents say we were able to take off the ground, so it worked pretty well.
Thank you for that, and all the hard work the crew had to do.
I'll jump up, Pete. We moved into the Roland Kelly shops. This is a picture of the Roland shed. Bathrooms were built by staff, and they're downtime to a winter, and they did a good job with that. We plan to build a salt bin at Kelly this fall. That will also help us with our salt issue. More storage we have, we can store it before the winter starts. That'll offer our heat through the season. We're getting quotes for some hoop buildings. We put fifty thousand in our budget for building these. The hoop structure probably costs around fifteen thousand. We were going to do this slab ourselves, but we had so much other stuff going on. We'll get some estimates, we need to ask all of the concrete, see what it considers to do this slab for. Purchasing some concrete blocks, and that's to build the walls where they would sit them. The tanks have been installed for all the mortuaries. They now tape the depth. This is an diesel exhaust fluid, it's a separate gas tank. We were able to delay that five years, but I didn't release last time. Now it's exhaust burning system, that's what it is. That's what's been so expensive in our trucks, because those systems tend to have issues that we have to fix. It's a lot of constant truck needs moving up. Our lease mortuaries should be under warranty, hopefully won't have that expense. That tank's installed in our shop, so it's a point, a little bit. Calsburg shed, couple of issues here, I want to remind you. We're still keeping an eye on, this is our shed right here, a fairly small lot that we have. This shed, we looked at, the landlord is maybe interested in selling. He's still trying to decide how much he wants, and if he really wants to move it on. So we're still, we haven't given an offer yet, but if we get to that point, I'll come to the board and see reports, come forward offering for that building. The front face of this wall has some issues that need repaired. For now, we just moved, really just one mortuary operating, new Roland shed. Temporarily close this, can we figure out what's going on with this building? Because if we buy this, we're probably just going to use this salt shed and remove that front wall, so that we need repairs, so we'll just buy it.
I like how you described some issues with the front.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very similar looking at the this shed. This is our aim shed. Bringing this one up because we are officially done using this shed. We used it the past winter for the salt bin behind it, but now we don't have to do it again, so... Facilities is using, or emergency management's using this bay for their trailer. They have, they need electricity but not heat. We'd like to use utilities out of our name, so we'll be talking to facilities. And suppose the board might keep calling if we want to keep this building, sell it or open it in the future.
Still want to fund Ontario.
Yes. This is a fairly old picture, because now there's new storage facility building right up around. Pretty tight to it, and that property owner has wanted to buy it for many years. It's hidden out of the way, it's in the way. And you see it's a little rough now, but it's got like five hundred meters of age on it. So we keep it, the facilities are going to have to disrepair them.
You, I think you answered a question I was getting ready to ask, which is why can emergency management move its trailer over to the farm, to the fairgrounds? You know, along with other equipment. There's no electricity at the fairgrounds, is there? I'm not sure, but when you said they needed electricity. So anyway, but that would be something we could consider.
I'll talk to facilities, okay? Next step is make that kind of recommendation.
Great.
We talked about the turbid lay replacement agreement. Not much more to add on that. I'd say we'll have hundreds of oversized coves to commit, not weight, just size. And we're just going to start this summer. Radios, we're starting to get the pricing information in on the new radio system. So we've got what the actual radios are caused. We haven't got really the cost, the difficulty of maintenance on top of that. Once we get all that information, we'll have to weigh our current electronic engineering system. They say there's an option to move that over to a digital system. So we've got to weigh the two against each other when we get all the cost of our current fee. Digital up with electronic engineering to thirty-one thousand nine hundred. It's about six, seven thousand dollar cost increase from year four. Apparently, they don't own the tower, but they're on the element. So those schemes are going to lay up, and we don't know what to have in the future, so it's also considered.
So Darren asked, would it start to look more... So Darren asks, would it start to look more at the radios? Given the fact that the, we've, the county has already approved three, up to three million dollars bonding for the entire interoperability radio system? So these radios will be covered under that amount of money? Or are they, are you looking at buying separately?
I don't believe that they cover the cost of the radios.
No. For your department? Because this came up during budget time. And I was, you know, as I was kind of surprised that it hadn't, that you were talking about it separately. And I, I remember the last thing I heard Rick Sanders say was something about that maybe keeping radios on stock and, you know, what was gonna happen there. But I'd understood that you were gonna be part of those discussions. So can you guys bring me up to date?
Well, we're very responsible for all this cost or apartment. Good news is I think.
Last contract.
These won't be able to be financed, so it won't be a huge one sum of cost. If we go with a new radius.
Why would we leave secondary roads on one radio system? With the use of one radios? And maybe I'm, I'm connecting the two and I shouldn't, all right? When everybody else is going to switch to a separate radio system?
I mean, that's what we're meant for, paying on cost. Doesn't sound like it's gonna be high enough to pay the cost of it, but I think we're probably gonna go with it.
Going that route being with Storycom?
Yeah. It's interoperability issue. We don't necessarily need that with all our equipment. We have one or two radios. We can probably rely on that, but it sounds like we're probably gonna switch them off.
Has Deena called you?
Yes, she's, it's a meeting. Bit hands on with the videos, that's the pricing concern. So we're just getting.
So just to give general feedback here, as you move forward with Storycom and, you know, within our internal departments, that I would, I would certainly like for the board to be able to consider, if it comes down to a cost issue, for the board to make the decision whether they want to allocate the money to the various departments who would need mostly secondary roads, who most, who would be deployed in a real emergency situation and need, and have need for that interoperability. I just don't, I'm just hoping that it doesn't come down to strictly a decision about, we'll go with the less expensive EE system for secondary roads when the whole point of, of all of these entities combined, expending about eleven million dollars, will be to try and get to everybody can talk to each other for that, that emergency situation, so.
Well, I think most agencies have money in their budgets already for radios and. Yeah. And it's, it's a work in progress in terms of the operating budget and what everything's gonna cost there. That's why I asked Darren if he had talked with Deena, because she's got the best sense of that right now.
I'm gonna make this seem quite well before they see the light. See, that's when the tower may go away that we're currently using. And they actually set up on a temporary system, so.
Yeah, it's a year temporary.
There'll be, I think, a three month temporary radio system. They won't have a full blown system ready.
Okay, but I, I look forward to further conversation on it.
Not much to add on the Cameron School Road, you've covered intersection. We've been, had a number of meetings with the city and the developer on possible partnership on funding year round power lights. Probably the most recent development is the developer all of a sudden, they were kind of pushed behind the timing of it. Now they're kind of backing off, but they don't feel like they need it quite so soon. So it probably opens up all time for negotiation. I don't think any of you have anything to add on that, but.
Ball's in the city's court right now and they're gonna get back to us on next meeting. This is likely not to be a fiscal year twenty project that we're gonna have to worry about then?
I would hope it would be a fiscal year twenty project, but we don't know yet.
All right, thank you.
Just touch base quick on a few DOT projects that are reflecting us, both in the same area. Two sixtieth here, they did the new bridges on I thirty-five. But they're hauling a lot of that dirt out of the, the new big ditch along two sixtyth here and really damaging the road. They hauled a lot of rock to it and put dust control down on the forest and that's ongoing. At least for another couple of weeks. Also on two forty-fifth, that's the road to get back to the flyover bridge construction and the borrow pit that they had. They continually put dust control on that forest as well. And lastly, not a DOT project, but the state of V A had to play in way close for a while. M G improvements there, intersection improvements, which puts a lot of traffic over to thirteen street. We'll see if they have a lot of issues on that. That's how I go. Couple of major district updates. D V twenty, a few issues with this. We let, this is the railroad crossing we recently let. It came in a little above our estimate, but we went ahead and proved it because it needs to be done. So that was seventy-four thousand for that. This, I want to kind of show you, this is the stuff that goes up through Fernald. Fixing this railroad issue doesn't really help Fernald unfortunately, because their tower goes on down beyond that point. So that won't help fix it, but they are included in the branch, so they will get the bill for some of that work. I don't think their bills are real high for them in the city of Fernald, but there's. The other issues in town, let me show you where it is. Down the south end is where I got a blow up. This is the big tree that's caused us a lot of problems. The tile runs right through here. That tree is very large and has clogged that tile many times with roots. We weren't planning on doing a replacement in there. There's a ton of utilities in here, which made it extra difficult to activate down and replace that with solid tile. So the roots wouldn't get in it, but recently this has a brand new homeowner who's now more open to allowing us to take that tree out, in fact, they want it out. So we'll get some estimates. We have one, I believe, about thirty-five hundred dollars to see if it'll be usable because it's a very large tree, power lines, overheads, house. It's gonna be a difficult tree move, but. So I think we're gonna go with the tree removal option instead of replacing this tile. That brings in the John Hunter discussion, this is John Hunter. He would like a new tile put in here, connect it in the district tile. This just kind of sits full of water at times. He's got his little e-thick out there. I don't want it quite so far from his house, but. We've kind of agreed to put a tile in here and try to drain as much as that we can to the last and get rid of that water. We're waiting on that till we can tie it to this tile contract, so. If we don't do that, we're just gonna put this in with our crews and hopefully do that again. It's, I've got a call from him as a best, I need to go back to him. I'm sure he's asking when it's gonna happen, or get to it soon if we can. It's just not terribly that priority. It just has some running water right here. It's not hurting that much.
The last time I talked to him, he understood that you've got lots of things you're working on right now.
Sure.
Just didn't want you to forget him.
And the other issue is, I believe, at least this landowner, when we got that to the rain event last week, they called in frantic, which happens, their, their base of flooding town. There's very little we can do about it. All rain to the district tile. We get a three to five inch rain. You learn about coefficients, that should take three, four weeks to rain. It's really farm tile, it's not a storm sewer. Unfortunately, but that's how the drainage is set up there. They want more done. Jerry's tried to work with the town. One thing we're hoping, you sent that survey out for some financial data. Hopefully try to get some grants and that wasn't well responded to, so that kind of fell through, so. Don't have a lot of other options in town, but for an older age, it's just a problem. Especially this area right here, the town is just sitting full of water a lot. Only way for water to get out is through the district tile.
Darren, on the John Hunter project, is, is he paying for that? Or are we considering it a repair?
I'll go back to that slide. For some reason, this is still a county road. It ends right here, it's just the stuff, it goes to really nowhere. I wanted to just vacate that, get it out of county's hands, but to remember that that time the board thought we should still put the tile in first and then make it move. So it would be a real expense.
All right, thank you.
The other issue in town, we show you where this is, right up on this corner. We've had an issue with a lot of logs, firewood being pushed out too far. They have been pushed back. They were out much further than this. It goes the other direction too, I don't envision that. I think this vehicle has been removed now. He's done a lot to try to help, but we've got it to about this stage and it's more of us. The railway line actually goes all in with the house before it too. So you can't remove everything, so it's a difficult situation. But by the way, I'm frustrated with the amount of garbage and logs that get piled up there. We've sent violations a couple of times and met, met them about a month ago out there and said this is far as we're going.
When you say we, has it been you, you and Jerry, you, Jerry and Margaret? Some other combination thereof?
I work with Ethan County Attorney, violations. We've had town meetings with Jerry involved.
Okay.
Jerry's aware of this too.
So we've turned out the entire crew, is what you're saying?
D V eight, this is a small district and I kind of make you aware of it because it's a. Right here were the major holes. These are the type of holes that you can fit semi truck in. The tile is so deep, it creates very large suck holes. We had a contractor fix that for about eleven thousand six hundred. It's a very small district, so only a couple of properties gave them that bill. Same thing happened just a year or two ago, so very similar to those, just received, so. They may come in and request all the district to do it again, but that would be a very costly expense. It's probably okay with some smaller bills at this point. Just right before, we did have a house moved. This was on two ninety, it's right by I thirty-five. The DOT bought this house out for their future widening project by I thirty-five. First move was the garage. That one, we actually had to remove a guardrail off of a bridge on one side to get it to fit through. Because that headed toward Ames. The other one was much larger. This was forty-five foot wide, but it went to the east across the interstate. We didn't have a lot of light, so that went fairly smoothly. We had to remove a few signs. Just comment on the second half page of dust control is scheduled for the last week of July. We currently have an equipment, equipment operator, one position open. We're currently doing interviews with that field. And two issues that popped up, I just wanted to make you aware of since I put the report together. Really wasn't part of the flooding up here, but they got some rain down here as well. We have this structure on six, seven, fifth right here. It's closed and it probably will be a permanent closure. This wasn't in the program a couple of years ago. Because of the skew angle of the culvert and the size, it's gonna be very costly. I think it was four hundred thousand to replace it. We decided because it's, it's a half mile road and these property owners can go out either direction. It may not affect them all that much. We're gonna try to buy more time out of this culvert. But that's the picture of the culvert, so. What happened is the water went underneath it. This just came up issue, I haven't even put that yet, but I think this back home here has collapsed. I don't think there's any repair at this point, so this is gonna be a permanent closure for a while. We can bring it up again in our five year program session if it's worthwhile to do a culvert replacement. I don't know. As you know, that just happened. And then lastly.
How utilized is that bridge?
I don't have the traffic coming offhand, but it's fairly low traffic.
Okay.
I guess it'll be ten, twenty vehicles a day. There is a few houses, I believe, and they were, may have just been built just on the north side. It's. They, they have access out, but it's probably more of a farm issue than through access.
Thank you.
Last, I just want to comment on the pipeline construction and completion. Just received some information. They were grouping all thirteen counties together for completion. Story counties have completed for some time. But they didn't want the board to afford signing off on completion until all fifteen counties were completed. But the utilities board gave guidance that they should be doing it on an individual county basis, so. They feel like Story County could sign off and give a final approval on pipeline construction. And why that's important is that opens up a little private property owner to start legal action against the property owner in ninety days if they feel some kind of badness or they fight with the property owner.
Who is they? Is that Dakota Access or is that I S G R representative?
I S G is the one that got the guidance from the utilities board.
So they're the they that was holding everything for all thirteen counties?
So I, the last correspondence I saw indicated that we would have a report soon and we should wait till we got the report to do a completion letter.
I think that's where it stands now, and I don't, you're gonna love to see if you can find that form or if you can't find that.
I found the form.
You found it.
I put it on the agenda and then I got some correspondence saying, no, we're supposed to wait until we got the, until we got the report from I M G.
I will go check with I S G. So they would start turning over documents to us, but I haven't seen any of that yet.
Yeah.
And that corresponds with, we would get the documents first when Ethan Anderson and I met with Eric, wasn't that his name?
Evan.
Evan, thank you, okay. With Evan from I S G at several months ago. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for a really complete report. Lets me know, lets the public know exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Thanks Darren. Jerry, you're up now.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning Jerry.
Okay, this is the second quarter report, so it includes April through the end of June. And the first slide we see is the zoning permits. Working from left to right, twenty nineteen through twenty seventeen. We're down probably about twenty-three, twenty-four percent from the previous second quarter in twenty eighteen. But we're real close to twenty seventeen second quarter. We increased a little bit on other permits, which includes accessory, additions to houses, decks, accessory buildings, those kinds of things. Down a little over half in terms of single family loans. It might be due to weather. This is April through June, we did have a really cold January through March. Interest rates went up a little bit, that might have something to do with it. It could be a number of factors. We reviewed quite a few agricultural exemptions. Again, any request for a house, accessory building, use of land that fits primarily adaptive use for agricultural purposes, while it's used for that purpose, it's the exemption from local zoning. So it's uncommon to review quite a few applications. We still, even though there might be an exemption, we request the applicant, property owner to submit the zoning permit application along with the agricultural exemption application and also review internally. We, the value is up a little bit. We did have a few single family homes that were up on five hundred thousand in value, so that increased the value from the previous twenty eighteen second quarter. This is the coverage map and you can see there's a lot of activity in the western quarter, western third. The guy dwellings represented with in yellow, some commercial improvements in red and then sign permits. You see a lot of activity around Huxley and Cambridge area for single family construction. These are development permit applications, really close to twenty eighteen second quarter level, but down a few. We received and reviewed seven subdivisions. Most of those were residential parcel subdivisions. There was an agricultural subdivision, five additional use permits for a number of things. Site plans, four, and then a variant from there. These are infringed plan and vacation. Ames Urban Fringe Plan and vacation, annexation request within Ames Urban Fringe Plan, variance, and then a rezoning request.
Jerry, speaking of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, have you received any further communication from the City of Ames consultants or the City of Ames about the interview that you and Deb Schildroth attended related to the Ames Urban Fringe Plan? That was about two months ago?
Communication with the consultants, had some discussions, brief discussions with the planning housing director about their process. They're not even quite halfway through their process.
All right.
As far as like the details of touching base, we haven't really started those discussions, but they know that the boards are interested in keeping that Ames Urban Fringe Plan agreement active.
Okay, good. I've been watching the council agendas and haven't seen that come up as a topic even, you know, but I just wanted to make sure. I know you're being very diligent about making sure that they don't forget us.
Yeah, they're really focusing on their conference.
Okay, thank you.
Other activities, we, there's actually three different stages of a conditional use permit. The major would be usually it's the first, a brand-new application. Those are reviewed internally by staff at the county. They go on to the Finding Zone Commission for recommendation, now to the Board Adjustment for action. A minor modification with, usually those are existing conditional use permits and there's minor changes to it, but it's enough that involves an internal review of county staff and then directed on by the Board Adjustment. And then we have insignificant modifications to existing permits and it's really limited impact to a site or to a neighborhood. And so we have this ability to review those internally. Oftentimes, they relate to improvements to communication towers, like they're swapping out antennas, renewing antennas, that kind of thing. But we only had one this second quarter. We had four of those in twenty eighteen second quarter. Property research, seven this second quarter. Property research, again, property owners, people who are interested in acquiring property can request us to do some evaluation as to whether or not the land is highly productive, so we use our land, but we just decide a settlement process to do that. We had seven applications this second quarter and fifteen in twenty eighteen second quarter. Conception review, that's the first stage, and a review of a development case, application for C U P's, rezoning request, variance request. We had five of those. That was the same number that we had in twenty eighteen. The other activities, the U S Census Complete County, the board appointed me as the liaison. Linda attended. We had probably around eight to nine cities represented, city clerks, city staff. Had a really good discussion. We went through, you know, what the U S Census is looking for and the goals that they have to count. All of the people in the county at once and at the right location. We talked a lot about the hard-to-count people. And traditionally, it's been zero to five-year-olds, the young people, eighteen to twenty-four, veterans, people that don't speak English very well. There's a number of persons who are hard to count. And we've reached out to Carla and Erin to try to see if we can get some dialogue going, including, and I think Brett has been invited, I think he's done some things to try to communicate the importance to veterans. But we're planning to meet to get some dialogue going to see if there's some things that their department can do or their network that they have to kind of, you know, find ways that are efficient, economical to reach the hard-to-count. We've been told from a representative from the U S Census that there will be materials that we can provide, that we can hand out at festivals, parades, that kind of thing, but we have not seen anything yet. But things like that can be helpful. Leanne has spoken on the radio show. We talked about putting some things in our county newsletters. We can use our website to get the word out. And we think that the more that we do now against Census, the Census Day is actually April twentieth, so it's going to come pretty fast, but the more that we do now, the better off that will be. And the goal is that we want everybody to self-communicate, or we want them to use either the paper document that they'll get in the mail, or you can use their devices or phone to tap into the network to self-communicate. So that's the goal. There's also a program that we learned about a few months ago called the New Construction Program. And they're really just trying to keep track of housing starts, which equate to address and location March fifteenth of twenty eighteen through, they want to know if it will be constructed by the end of April of twenty twenty. So we're going to be using the same program that we use to assist cities to identify addresses. And the information that's communicated from the Census Bureau is that it's pretty easy to use. Talking to J I S Matt and Emily when she was here, we thought that we probably need to reach out to see if some of the smaller cities needed some assistance. We did that. I only heard from one city, City Gilbert, that was requesting some assistance. So I think we'll probably need to reach out again to see if they'll need some help. And again, it's the new construction, mid-March through April one, so they need to provide information to the U S Census Board. Head of Victory on Appeal, thanks to Ethan's work, Attorney's Office. I'm not going to go into any details. I'll let him do that. We've been told, and I think I can say this, is that the opponents are considering to appeal the appeal through the Iowa Supreme Court. So we're waiting for follow-up on that. But our goal all along is to receive voluntary compliance and with the goal of getting down to the number that we think they have permitted, which is thirty-four units. So, and that's what we're striving for at this phase. These are some things that the Board Adjustment ruled on recently. Raspberry Hill Perkins, Brad Perkins. It's the property that there's been some conditional use permits granted for different things. Mr. Perkins resubmitted his bed and breakfast application. Initially, it was approved by Board Adjustment to have eight units and a separate venue for events. He submitted a brand-new application just for four guest units. He has a plan to add in addition to the house to be ADA compliant and no event venue. And that did go through the review process and got approved. The next thing is the Ames Waterwell Project.
I would like to ask about Raspberry Hill. All right, so with a new plan and a new, it sounds like a business plan also, but what does that do to the cases, the court cases that are against this property? There are two, correct?
Well, you've got the bed and breakfast, you've got camp ground.
Right.
And then Y S S.
Y S S, oh, there are three. There are three lawsuits, all right. And have we heard, we know that Y S S is the first one, but the next two are against the Perkins plans?
Yeah, the first two, the judge decided and ruled that there wasn't adequate information for the Board of Adjustment to rule that they didn't have written findings of fact.
All right.
The county through the board's action has decided to challenge those decisions. And I understand that's still ongoing.
I think I see a nod from, they're turning the back, all right?
But I mean, ultimately, there's, to my knowledge, there's no restriction on the number of conditional uses that a property or a property owner could have. And ultimately, it likely comes down to a decision of the property owner, which is McKay still own that property.
Right.
Perkins have this intent to acquire. I think they have a lease agreement right now. But they do intend to acquire.
Okay. Thank you for that extra update.
The well project is for, two wells will be constructed in Ames. One would be constructed just west of Sage Boat Road. They're trying to improve their capacity. They've got some wells in the downtown area that are not as efficient as some of their other wells. And they don't want to run into a situation where they have to do restrict use type of thing with users. And so that went through the review process and got approved. Darren talked a little bit about Next Era Energy. They're converting a hundred units in Warren, Lincoln, and Sherman Townships. They're taking off the blades, they're replacing generators and the gearbox assemblies. And so they intend to get started sometime in July and then finish up sometime in November. So that's their schedule. But the current ordinance has a provision for, on the shadow flicker, there's a maximum amount of shadow flicker that can occur, in this case on a dwelling. There's a maximum number of hours, which they wouldn't be exceeding. They've done their analysis and have determined that initially, there was like twenty-one dwellings that would be impacted by the shadow flicker, that would not be meeting the requirement. So our ordinance says either they have to meet a requirement, not exceed the threshold, or they negotiate with the property owner. So they received approval for all but eight of the proposed conversions. And so they intend to come back when they complete their negotiations with all of them. Minola Construction, that was a ball pit on Two Hundred Forty Fifth Street. They used that dirt for the new relocated off-ramp to from I-35 to Highway thirty. They also used it to shore up the cranes that placed all the steel for the final bridge. While when they constructed it, it did not meet the front-end setback. And so they requested a variance. Part of what we were struggling with is the slope. They're supposed to have a five-to-one slope, which is a gradual slope from the start to where the slope touches the water. And so their slope, they got, they met the slope requirement, but not the setback. The setback was supported by the property owner. The good thing is there, it's a dead-end road situation, so traffic is pretty limited. There are some houses in there, but again, it's kind of through road, so that variance was approved. Current cases, first one is, it turned out to be a rezoning request. Property owner who was a veterinarian on Hundred Thirty Street sold property to a new veterinarian who has more staff than what the home business or instruments. And it's beyond what the minimal easing would allow with the amendment that we went through. So they're going to be requesting a rezoning to A two, which should be, which would work out if it's approved. And then that's going to come to the board supervisors ultimately. Dakens Lake Cabin on Hundred Thirty Street, this would be the first cabin that they're proposing to construct. That's a C U P. Conservation practices, geothermal, they're going to collect rainwater. They're really trying to be very conscientious of the environment and conserving the natural resources there for this project. Stormwater erosion control ordinance, we are ready to take this to the Finding Zone Commission. This will be tomorrow, so this should be before the board in a couple of weeks. And so we're trying to bring out really more clarity in the ordinance, bring out some of the information that's referenced in Iowa Stormwater Management Manual. We're really matching up with, we're not creating a wheel here at all. We're matching up with some of the other counties in the state. We're similar in our requirements with the City of Ames. And this is something that we've been working on for a number of months. And we actually put together a focus group that provided us with some really good feedback. There's some consultant engineers, some environmental interest. Linda attended that meeting. And it really helped kind of focus our work. And like I said, this is ready to go, and we're going to be talking about this some more. Subdivision streets, thank you, Gabe, for assisting. This is something we have been asked. It's on our work program. We're to assess all of the private subdivisions and determine whether or not, you know, which ones were publicly dedicated for public use and to do an inventory of all the signage. Because we've had some requests from property owners to install certain signage to restrict the use or entry. And so Gabe has learned that we've got over eight subdivisions. And this is something that he took on when he started here in May. And so probably what we're going to do, since there's so many of these, is we're going to hit the growth Townships. We're going to be meeting on this mall and we're going to start on Third Gates and just go out and inventory. We're able to look at Street Google View, that some of the subdivisions, a lot of that data is sold. So that's why we need to have an inventory. And so we're going to hit the top three most populated Townships with the most number of subdivisions.
So which are the, which are the three most populated?
Franklin, tell me, uh, Franklin, Washington.
Washington and Nevada.
Nevada, yeah. Making sense?
So we're looking forward to getting going on that. And then, of course, you know, we're going to put together some information and we'll likely be involving Attorney's Office on what we find. Re-management sites, another thing we've been working on a long time. We've got two new property owners who get contracts with DuPont to store soda material. The way our current lease is set up, though, that we will compensate if we use the site. But what we're hearing from these property owners is that they want some type of compensation stipend, like on a monthly basis. Which is not the same as probably what they're getting with their contracts with DuPont. But we, you know, we tried different things. We've thrown out, you know, the possibility of maybe the county acquiring some property. Some of the counties that we learned own their own property and it's always a lot easier if you have ownership. And then if you need, you have a disaster, you've got a place to go to bring the material to do the sorting. Which, you know, I think there's still some merit to that. Because I think about a year ago, we had two property owners who initially were interested. But then when they learned about what the impact will be to their property, they lose interest real quick. Because there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment, machinery. And so, you know, once the site is no longer needed for re-management, it takes a long time for that soil to recoup and be productive again. So the two that we had last year are no longer interested. One was indicating that he wanted more money, but we didn't get that from that person. So likely, you'll, you know, this is something that, because it's a work program item, and the nature of this, we work with the County Attorney's Office, they're planning some commission for it. So we've got two likely, two likely candidates. Private side, we've got two cities who have expressed some interest in Maxwell. They would be willing to work with the county to allow us to use part of their site for just the landscaping material tree, the gas generating, which is pretty common with like a tornado or a housing incident. And then the City of Nevada, the city administrator has expressed some interest in working with us. So details need to be worked out, but we've got at least four locations that we think we can locate.
You said DuPont. So DuPont's still holding the arrangements with these landowners? Verbio didn't take it over?
What we've heard is they have contracts that are like expiring this summer. That's what we've heard.
Okay, all right.
And so some of these sites are good because they've got access already, they've, you know, the culverts in place.
Right.
Approaches. There's a base that's down that they're using to store the soda material. So they're that much further ahead than a site that doesn't have any improvements in the case.
All right. Okay, alright.
So, I mean, this is the...
Which is part of the reason maybe why the landowners are asking for a fee from us then, right?
Well, and they know that, you know, it's with the impact of storing heavy materials and machinery, it does impact the productivity for growing things. So that's why they're interested in what we're saying. And some of them said, if we don't work something out, they're interested in something else. But that something else has to be something that's permitted under our zoning regulations or an SEA agricultural incentive activity.
Thank you, Darren.
Land evaluation, or land development regulation, we're doing a complete review. There's a few things that we need to make adjustments on with regard to federal changes and communication, tower, language. And then the state law passed, the state legislation passed a law for non-conforming mobile home parks to allow them to swap out old for new on a non-conforming situation. So we may need to look at that. But again, we're looking at all of the ordinances and we're halfway through that process. Complaints, we've got a handful of them. Crestview mobile home park, our department's been involved since 2017. There's been a lot of improvement that has occurred there. Basically, it's down to removing three mobile homes. There's a few sheds that need to be removed. The debris, for the most part, that was on the north side of the site, was removed. At least, that's what it appeared when we showed up in June. But there's quite a few semi trucks, trailers, and vehicles that the property owner has indicated an interest in acquiring. So he needs to either acquire them, go through the process to do that, or remove them from the property. Initially, we requested the property owner to give us a compliance schedule, which we did not receive. So we put together a compliance schedule for the property owner. We started end of May and through the end of August is when we're hoping to have the site cleaned up. And it's something that I think is very achievable. We think we're rounding third base here, but, you know, we have to have a willing property owner to be, to participate in this process. So, and what we ended up doing is for the first items, they weren't, it wasn't complete, so we wrapped that into the second. And then so the first and second will be wrapped into the third. We've got another inspection we do at the end of July. And then, like I said, everything is supposed to be done by the end of August.
Is the property owner meeting you out there? So he is on premise when you're pointing out these items that still have not met the agreement schedule?
Yeah, every time, before I go, I call, I email him.
Okay.
He's been there. And oftentimes, there's other people who are there expressing interest in acquiring the property. So, and that's been, that's happened, I think, every time since I was there in April. I mean, all of the mobile homes are supposed to be gone by the end of November of last year. And so he got an extension through the letter that we sent him in mid-March. But we, you know, we discussed it and we actually showed up April 1 to assess. And that's when we learned that all of the three.
So even though you've got these monthly inspections going forward, he's not meeting the goals of the monthly inspections, correct? I mean, he's behind on where he should be.
Yeah, I say debris. A lot of these units have a lot of stuff jammed underneath them. And then there was items that were within or beside of these units. And a lot of that material has been removed. So he took care of that. There's, to shore up these mobile homes, they use these center blocks. And so there's a lot of those that are stacked.
Well, where I'm headed with this, alright, and with Ethan in the back, is that, having sat on the board, is we went through the last two years with Crestview. I have some very strong feelings about him not complying with the newest set of extensions and work program that we have given him. And so I'm asking, at what point here can we go take action again? And who's going to take it? The Board of Health, or are we done with that? No, Board of Health is now written off, so now it has to be we, the county, as planning and development. I'm not open to any real more tolerance for him. That's me, I'm one of three here, but I think it's about time for the board to talk about this. Unless there's some reason that you and Ethan tell us that we have to. But I mean, we're just giving him two more months.
Yeah.
It's, for me, and I think probably a couple of previous supervisors and some other people who've had to deal with him along, we're done, you know?
Well, there were, I think in April, there was like 10 sheds. And now there's four. And the message that I received from the property owner at the end of June was that somebody was coming to pick them up. This was on Friday, somebody was coming to pick them up over the weekend. And I didn't go back out. I've been there many, 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 many times. I didn't, but I was told that these sheds are going to be gone. So that was a part of the second requirement that he was supposed to meet at the end of June.
And he didn't meet it?
Debris, well, he's got it down to four. And three of those were stacked, they're actually relocated to the northwest side of the site. And he said, somebody's coming to get those over the weekend. So that might, that may have happened. So if the sheds are gone and the debris is gone, he's taken care of one of the requirements. So now we're focusing on removing the remaining three mobile homes and then the vehicles.
I feel like we are asking you, especially you, okay, and to put out a lot of energy to hold a hand to walk him through. What he's, what should have happened a long time ago, and as I said, given the fact he was here multiple times, given that we have legal involved, he got an attorney. I mean, this is just a bad soap opera going on and on. So at this point, my concern is while we want voluntary compliance, I really am concerned about how much time Jerry is having to spend on this, rather than us, let's just move forward and at least you devote your time to slap, I mean, you know, getting what we can legally out of it.
Right, and every, the letter we sent, we indicated that we reserve the right, because our process starts with a notice of violation. And we are to give them 30 days to comply with whatever it is that they need to do. And then if they don't comply, then we start the citation process. And that's when I started working with Ethan through the court process, to set up a court date with a judge. So by the end of this month, we can send the notice of violation. And if it's not done by the end of August, then we can go to the citation process.
And why wouldn't we go to the citation process at the end of July?
We can.
That's what I'm asking, is that it come before us in July to give you directions to do that. I, I, one more month is just one more month of us paying you to hold his hand, or babysit him, or watch over, whatever term you want to use. I know I'm using kind of majority of terms here, because I just feel we, as a county, should be done with this. We've spent enough expenditures, let's move on. So that's what I'm asking, that it be put on the agenda for, before the end of July, so that we can give you direction to do that.
I'm, I'm also feel like we've given this person plenty of time, but I trust your judgment as to when you want to bring it back.
Yeah, I, I mean, what I'm used to, I'm used to work with people and we always, through my training, you know, give people the benefit of the doubt. And if you see progress, each time you show up, then it's encouraging. And because a lot of times, there's just this, you know, this stuff's been accumulated over many, many, many years. And it's, when you tell them this has to go, and you give them 30 days, 30, 60, it's just like, they don't know how to deal with that. But if you can sort through, like, okay, these two things by this date, these two additional things, it kind of helps them. I mean, you see a couple, three below, these are messy properties. There's all kinds of things going on there. And we have compliance schedules of all three. And so far, we're seeing progress. But when you get to the point where you don't see progress, then I make my call to Ethan or county attorney's office and say, hey, we're not getting any change here. We, you know, we need to go to a citation.
I know the previous board's willingness to work with this property owner had a great deal to do with the fact that he was providing housing of almost last resort to a very vulnerable population. And therefore, we felt, and I believe I can speak somewhat for that previous board, in that we felt it was worth the time and the energy and the effort that community services put in, that our legal department put in, that a former supervisor put in. I went out and checked on dogs, I mean, Jerry and Margaret and what they went out. And we did that all not for the benefit of this property owner. We did it for the benefit of the tenants to make sure that we could help them as much as possible transition out. There is no one, correct, living at this property anymore.
There's not supposed to be.
There is not supposed to be. And we're down to enough trailers that we're pretty sure of not, okay? Because we then went through a period after it'd been shut where we found out allegedly people were still living out there. So we continued to work with them, even though they had no potable water. We've reached the end of the line. I understand it's only 31 days. And so we've had discussions already, since part of this new board has come up, about how, how much extra time do you give, alright? I am not in any way, Jerry, trying to undermine you and the good customer service you provide. I just am frustrated that there doesn't seem to be any reason to just drag it out one more month. But it is your time and you are in control of your time about how you want to allocate it. So, thank you, I'll, I'll be quiet, thank you.
Well, I mean, I mean, he has, if all his sheds are gone, he's, he met that part in the debris, like I said. It was primarily in that north side is where it was. And so before the, what's required has been addressed.
I think we'd all be comfortable with you not giving him any further extensions.
Yes.
Maybe going with that is the consensus, can we do that?
Thank you, that's good.
Is that okay, Jerry?
That sounds good to me.
You can work with that, okay?
I appreciate the input.
Thanks, okay.
And then this just brings us to the work program. Each year, we sit down with the Finding and Zoning Commission and the board and identify special projects that our staff should be working on, you know, with, internally, with other departments, with other cities. Some of these, half of these are probably requirements, implementation requirements from the C2C conference of plan. Half of them are from other sources, since the staff generates things that came from the board or the, or the Finding and Zoning Commission. So I think I went through most of these things. Our goal is, I think all of them but one, we're actively working on. And we'd really like to get most of these things accomplished for the end of the summer, before the end of the summer. Like I said, because these are work program items, we go to the Finding and Zoning Commission, you know, to give them an update, gets a recommendation before they come back to the I think I touched, just on everything, do you have any questions?
Very thorough report, thank you.
It was, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move us quickly through the next few agenda items so we can get to number 17. Upcoming agenda items, is there anything that, of note or? I am so sorry. Leanne, other reports. Thank you, Shelley. County, Story County Fair 2019, Leanne, I'm sorry about that.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
I provided a memo to the board for the discussion this morning. I'm coming for this new board to see what, if anything, you do want to do for presence of the county fair. It's coming up very soon, in a couple of weeks. Fair board meets tomorrow, tomorrow evening, so I have an opportunity to have some discussion with them based on direction today. Last year, the board, sitting at that time, decided not to do the booth. I want to make sure that that's still the desire of this current board. And then there was some discussion of hosting a night at the fair with some swag, possibly, you know, giveaway things. There's still time to accomplish that too. Nothing was budgeted though. So I just need some direction so we can some, go forward and answer some questions of the fair board.
We're off the close to the beginning, or the opening of the fair right now, aren't we?
The 19th. I mean, there's still, based on discussion today, there's still time to get things ordered and get them delivered. Nothing was budgeted though, and I really don't even know how many to plan for and items like that.
The advertising has already gone into the weekly papers, because I've seen it, in the daily paper. So, so to set a Story County Day and then not, quite frankly, have it announced anywhere in hopes that it, you know, maybe it would generate some additional traffic, it would generate some additional awareness, we wasted our opportunity here, I think, for that kind of thing. And I'm sorry, I haven't seen the memo because the link didn't work. And I was on a list of things I had to do to try and remember to call and then, and so I just tried it again and it still doesn't work.
Yeah, I just checked it too. And it takes me to like a calendar.
I think I would concur that we, let's look at this for next year and start earlier, start several months earlier, talking about it, maybe strategically. I hate to see us do something last minute, because I think that may be, you know, not the best use of your time and not the best use of others' time, who might have to, you know, get involved at this point. I'm, I'm personally comfortable with just taking a buy on it this year.
And really, the direction from the board last year was do something more along the lines for county employees. At the, if I recall from the discussion, at least that was the leaning of one board member. Those, I'm not even sure how we would accomplish that, just at the fair for county employees.
Let's not do something just for the sake of doing something.
Right.
Definitely okay without a booth.
Now, if you want a supervisor to go to the fair, to our own aid, you know, to apologize for us not, you know, being able to come up with something to our table or whatever.
No, they don't have.
They don't expect anybody.
No, they don't have any concern.
That's good.
I know they, they're doing daily posts on different opportunities that are coming with their social media. So I, yeah, I don't think they're, I just want to be able to communicate to them so that they have an opportunity to plan ahead.
And, you know, as individuals, once again, the three supervisors have decided to participate in the ribbon auction. And I've run that, those, checked that money over, okay?
Thanks for coordinating that, I appreciate it.
No problem, it was, anyway, so let's see, emailing all the work involved. But anyway, so, so, you know, but we've done that as three individuals out of our personal finances to do that, you know, as the board. But there's no money coming from the county. So, yeah, I think, let's take a pass this year and then let's put it on a work schedule for a discussion to start maybe in May next year. I remember when we did the booth a couple of years, I didn't, I wasn't able to participate in them, but we had county employees who signed up, if that's one way to go. If we want to pursue an idea about do something for the employees, we'd have to figure out what that would be. Yeah, so let's look at that next year. Thank you.
After last year, after destroying two tents with, I think a booth option is not necessarily the way to go with the weather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
Now, head on, upcoming agenda items, anything we need to talk about?
Yeah, I've got a couple, a couple of items. The first one is, is that after becoming aware that we have not changed our, it looks like since, our schedule of maximum income for general assistance and veterans assistance, et cetera, since 2014, at least I was looking at a schedule that had 2014 at the top. I did talk to Alyssa Wagnall about talking to Carla Webb when she came back, okay? I did talk to Alyssa Wengel about talking to Carla Webb when she came back, okay, about possibly coming before the board for direction and presenting some information to the board about how it is we handle those general assistance and how we set those guidelines. So that's purely in Alyssa and Carla's hands when they get to it. Today, if everybody's fine with that, they could go ahead and do some of the research and asking Carla to do some of that and come to us at some point for discussion later on.
Alyssa, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think it's just a discussion on how it, I don't know how that, that level is set.
Okay.
Karen probably knows more.
Okay. So I don't anticipate it coming right away. Then I believe we are set to talk about the urban renewal area grants, small community grants on the 23rd. And at that point, I would like to have a discussion about where we believe we are financially headed in at the beginning of fiscal year 20. I know Lisa Markley has crunched some new numbers. And I'd like to have kind of that as part of the discussion about where we are. According to my calculations, just on the small community grants themselves, we're about $100,000 more in asks for these urban renewal funds than we have funds to do. And so that seems to be a good time for us to discuss the updated budget calculations.
I heard August 6 being a...
Is that it?
That's what the calendar has.
Thank you. In that case, then August 6 would be, I see no reason to have it before. I don't know, we're getting any other grant requests at least, you know, but that seems a good time to have it then.
Okay. They're planning on a presentation, Leanne, and Lisa are on August 6.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, those are the two items I have for upcoming.
Public forum number two.
No, I didn't have anything else. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Public forum number two, any public comments? I don't see any members of the public here. There's an armored border, so I will, will skip public forum number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. I have nothing that I need to announce here today.
I don't have anything at this time either.
Okay. Tonight, the Ames Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee meets. We're going to be having the public hearing and probably approving the 2020 through 2024 transportation plan for the Ames Area Metropolitan. Thursday morning, Hurd aboard meets in a special session again, still dealing with the audit and the budget. We did not pass a budget. We were not comfortable on June 30th. It's odd. I've never covered in all my years as a, decades as a journalist or as sitting up around boards for 25 years to enter into a new fiscal year without an approved budget. I will tell you, I have spoken to the assistant auditor, state auditor, who was involved in the fiscal year 18 budget. And the item that received the notation or the, the statements about omission from the profit and loss statement and postings for that year was a result of, it used to be when Heartland was the subcontractor or the contractor. Apparently, we, Story County, did the fiscal on it. But that was something that was not used to be required. I just want to say, nobody's done anything wrong here. It just wasn't required. I want to give you background. And then Heartland, or sorry, Hurd took over the financials for them and redid for all of the counties at that point. And in, then in fiscal, then in 18, the legislature passed, I'm looking at Lisa smiling, okay, passed a new requirement about listing obligations for post-employment health insurance. And that entry then in the audit is completely related to that post-employment health insurance. And there is no requirement that the agency have a cash reserve for that. And so that's the big thing that I think we need to worry about. Obviously, the agency will fix that posting situation. And so on the 11th, then I, and we meet, I will bring back an update on the 16th, including, I, I do want to let you know, I also emailed my fellow board, my fellow board members and I asked if we could on Thursday discuss, be brought up to date about the discussions other county boards may be having about whether shoring up in some of the services for Hurd to ascertain that current service levels are kept, okay? And then I have the Ames Economic Development Commission Executive Meeting on Friday morning. So I will be gone from after our meeting on the 16th, actually after the Story County Housing Trust Fund meeting. And then I will be back for on Monday, the 22nd, I think it is, or, yeah, 22nd. Okay?
That's what I've got. I guess I could say I'm going to be out of the office Thursday and Friday this week for...
Okay. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for us to go into closed session for item number 17, pursuant to Code Section 21.51A.
Okay. I would move that we go into closed session pursuant to 21.51A, general assistance appeal to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential.
I will second that motion.
Okay, discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
We will go into closed session and I think we're headed to Conference Room A for that. Is that right, Ethan?
And I need to just swing by my office to grab that.
Okay. Okay. We are back in open session and I would entertain a motion on item number 17 on the agenda.
I move that we uphold the decision of Community Services related to this general assistant appeal of which records were required by law to be kept confidential.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Have upheld the decision. Thank you very much. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn our session.
I make the motion to adjourn session today.
I second that. Okay, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Thank you.
Yes. Merkin?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
I like that. Good.
So Erin and I will wrap order and we'll have that.